Give me a minute, the brass band. Give me a minute, the brass band. The brass band, please hold. Let me request, please. Not all of the leaders can proceed to His Excellency. So this can be controlled. Please cooperate with the protocol officers to return to your seats while just a few, I think not more than three. We will go to His Excellency, the governor, to present the next document. And yes, I also say that the leaders of Ikonini Federal constituency also have gifts to present to His Excellency, the governor. Please, let's have it controlled and let's ensure that we have ample space for the needed optics to be properly captured. And Your Excellency, even the youths of this federal constituency, they also have a gift or an award for the governor as the most youth or most friendly governor, most youth-friendly governor. And they also are coming towards you to present that award. And we appreciate all of them for their gesture of love and solidarity and for the gifts that have come. Not so much for their worth, but a lot more to express the sentiment of love and support towards His Excellency, the governor. Let me acknowledge that Uemokoko, fellow Nigerian society of engineers here, and even Ukeme Ayo of UNK Limited is also here, a son of this federal constituency, particularly from any local government area. We celebrate these leaders in the engineering sector and we appreciate their good work. Thank you so much. Please, let's wrap off that session as quickly as we can so we can proceed to other matters as we make efforts to... Thank you, please. Thank you, thank you, thank you, leaders, thank you. Please, let's all return to our seats, thank you. Thank you, please. Your Excellency, we move to the penultimate item on our program. Today, let me please request the greatest Nigerian students to take it easy. There will be ample time for all of them to gyrate if they have to. Your Excellency, please, we want to unveil and present the several grants and packages that have accompanied you for this federal constituency town square. As the Secretary to the State Government had mentioned, everywhere His Excellency goes, he goes bearing gifts, he goes bearing empowerment to the people of that federal constituency. Your Excellency, today we're going to present checks to just four out of so many of the beneficiaries that we have come here to empower today. Just four of them would receive the checks on behalf of the others. I'd like to welcome the South South Secretary of the APC, Dr. Odosen, to please accept to come to the stage and present the checks, please. Let's invite him to come to please present the checks to the four representatives of the beneficiaries of the several grants and packages and empowerments brought here by His Excellency, the governor of our dear states as they continue to build entrepreneurs and the milliners of the future from Ikonini Federal constituency. Thank you so much, thank you so much. As our customers, I will read out the names and the checks will be handed over to our leader to present to them. And after that, I will just make a comment and then we'll proceed to the next item. Your Excellency, from Ikona Local Government Area, a gentleman involved in sales of building materials, Mfon Okokunima, to receive a cheque of five million naira from His Excellency, the governor, to support his business and to expand what is already. Thank you, thank you so much, thank you. Please, as Mfon Okokun receives the cheque, please you step aside to my left hand while I invite Diana Abasemundejona, Sales of Food Products, to please also proceed to receive her cheque from His Excellency, the governor. Thank you so much and congratulations. The next to receive is Nsekak Michael Johnson from Any Local Government Area, a cheque of five million naira. And I dare say that this cheque translates to cash with the speed of light under the administration of His Excellency, the governor. Congratulations. And finally, please, Bonifess Nelson, Sales of Timber and Building Materials, also from Any Local Government Area, also receiving a cheque of five million naira from the governor, of course represented by Dr. Odosen. Thank you very much. Please, the four of them to please come forward, stand with Dr. Odosen to take a group photograph before he makes his remarks and then returns to his seat. The four of them, please. Thank you very much, Dr. Odosen, to make his remarks, thank you.
Thank you very much, Your Excellency, the working governor of Akwibom State and his deputy. Please permit me to stand on the existing protocols. I have to thank His Excellency and the people and governor of Akwibom State for this novel idea, very noble one for that matter, for injecting these cash resources into this federal constituency. This is a symbol of a renewed hope agenda of Mr. President where at the state level, our governor is also implementing their arise agenda, which is now giving these empowerment packages to people in Ikonini Federal constituency. And I want to urge the beneficiaries to make judicial use of these resources and increase their threat and make sure that they touch other lives in the name of God, the Father, God, the Son, and God, the Holy Spirit. Thank you very much, Ikonini, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, the brass band. Thank you so much. Thank you. Your Excellency, our governor, and all the distinguished guests who are here with us today as we celebrate quality leadership and good governance brought to bear by His Excellency, the governor of Akwibom State. The moment has come where we would be listening to the golden governor who has been so busy acknowledging all other golden potentials that have come here today. Your Excellency, Abantikonomiado, a golden local government area, or rather a golden federal constituency. And His Excellency never tires out of acknowledging those who are equally golden bethers of life as it were. We continue to appreciate all of them. The brass band, I invite you to join the party while we get some moments. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I think we're going down. Ikoni Songo. Ikoni Songo. Ikonadio. Edio. Esierel. Inibroke. Your Excellency, it's time for us to hear from you. You have been described here as a miracle-working governor. Let me therefore invite all of us who are here to please rise up on our feet, put our hands together, celebrate as we welcome the governor who has unified leadership, the governor who has unified Akwibom State, the governor who is working very hard here.
I always like, I always like I bow down. Oh, yeah, students here have been there. I met a man, the second stanza of that song. That's my own special stanza. Alleluja. Alleluja.
Amen.
Alleluja.
Amen.
Abasi diyofrewo.
Amen.
Gombio, alleluja, ale wonderful. Akworo de fawo do manabongi se, alleluja.
Amen.
Thank you. Akwibomisong. Ikonisong. Ikonisong. Inibroke. Epe se. Epe se. Epe anse.
Akwibom United.
Thank you. Before I do the protocols, when you see me recognize golden people, you know it's deliberate. They are golden people and they have a golden governor. So if you want the governor to recognize you, you have to become golden. There's another golden person coming there. Let him find it, let her come. Let me tell you why I'm doing that. When we started this campaign, some people who did not have what to say, they said, "I did not..." They did not want an albino governor. Do you remember? Then my dear wife came up. My dear wife came up and said to them, "You may be an albino, but to me, you are my golden boy." They will not give us a chance in the past. They will body shame us. They will call us names. They will not let us come to the public. But today, God has brought us out. Anywhere I see one of any of them, I must recognize them. So we are golden people. No, you are not too golden. Don't, don't go and use bleach oil, don't go and use bleach oil. Thank you, God bless you. I postpone the rest to another day. Let us make progress. Jefta, if I have to call you again, Bana, take and give to a man. Thank you, thank you. Your Excellency, the Deputy Governor of Akwibom State, the Honorable Speaker of the Akwibom State House of Assembly, distinguished senators and members of the House of Representatives that are here. Let me use our brother speaking for the people of Any Ikono Federal constituency in the House of Representatives, right, Honorable Manuulukbondo. And let me thank you very especially for the offer you have given to lighten up our sights in the whole of Ikona and Any. South South Secretary of our party, the old Progressive Congress and the entire party structure, members of IPAC that are here, Honorable Deputy Speaker, Secretary of Government and your spouse. Please permit me to briefly to abbreviate the protocol list and say, ladies and gentlemen, for once of time, let us start by thanking God for this weather as we go around all these federal constituencies. God has shown us favor. He has given us clement weather. This is the ninth federal constituency. The grand finale will be on Saturday in Etinan Federal constituency. I hear they call it the grand homecoming and I know you will be there. God has been faithful to return all glory, all honor, all adoration, all thanksgiving to Him, the only wise God, the immortal, the invisible, the one that sits above the earth and rules in the kingdom of men, the one who was, who is, and who is to come. May His name be highly exalted in Jesus' name. Today, as I arrived here, they gave me one brochure of a PA. A PA who out of the small talking he gets, he has gone to his community to drill borehole and has reticulated it all around the village. Akworo fawo bitang, kwebo ordinary PA. PA ido ordinary. PA to the governor of a state cannot be ordinary. This young man has done this. But some of us have political appointments. You are still lying to your people that there's nothing governor has done. He has done nothing, you are still there. No PA, hear me and hear me well. No PA, a less than a million naira. And when they want to talk, they will say, "Stipend, stipend." You call one million naira stipend. And a stipend, it be now, from your mouth to God's ears. From your mouth to God's ears, one million naira is stipend to you. One million naira is not stipend to me. Serious money. So if you have a PA, we are going to have us the SSI to compile the list of all political appointees and their local government areas. We are going to publish it in the newspaper. Call your own PA, call your SA, call your SSA, call your commissioner, ask them, "What have you done?" House member, federal house member, mountain. Akala ka. Akekekaa iko. Ekaibekebelebeje. Akaaka. Aka. As since you go, you go. But my young and you fuck. They don't want two hundred million naira, no care they him. You know government, government, you don't. Government, you ain't cook. That's why I point you, you don't know for. So my gentle, you are no fun though. You found out me fun, no fun down me fun now. No, you're good fun though. So I know me three communities. I get a blessed who they give me by your beer. I don't quite so, I so mandito. Quite so, I so mandito. Government, you ready, I you you me no. Government, you ready, I you you me no. I so about government. As I'm a governor My group, I want to do, do send a canker ke Akef, federal constituency I sit behind them Yeah, we can't put on, we don't know, we don't Yeah, yeah, I swear on you, who fuck So blessed Lawrence D So today You have been promoted from PA To SA SA on public works You don't want to fuck Sanfriram They can't deny it, but Don't move, say, to pay to borrow Say, do something, do something, be honest Compare the effort, not a soccer phone I've made commissioner for works Every now and then SA on public works See, I don't, for me, I'm a woman, I'm a woman I was saying, I'm a friend Can you saw now, I to pay me, I don't go, no, I know Governor, I was doing, I'm fine You will go far Thank you Umaka, baby No, but PM for women, I'm so As I'm a governor, I'm still stipend, stipend When she get a stipend I got a meeting, but a stupid, stupid Look, you don't refer me, I didn't come, member, you know For the Chief Ten C title It's also eighty-eighty I appreciate it And I understand that to whom much is given, much is expected Make a sincere It can't repent I'm my confess The, I work out confession, gay Catholic That gave me, I give a man a phone But their sins are forgiven I don't think you need an project I forget that, you need amdo Because we believe That once So I say, I'm a woman Go, mama Get me, man As I'm a daughter You need get it, go, come, I saw So I'm daughter So come, man So I say, I'm a woman, for though I don't, I don't So if it come to forty-eighty Me come, I'm bad, I'm afraid, I'm bad, I'm bad, I'm bad About three hundred four About maybe, maybe, I said, I'm bad In me, I'm worried And we are going to review it I want to promise you That in next year's budget, by the grace of God Every local government will have an item in the budget We'll look at it And to be honest, based on the availability of funds Because everything is about funding That's why I want you to support the government of President Bola Ahmed Tenebu Because it's making funding available to state governments You have to, will you support him? Will you support the Senate President? Will you support your governor? So we will be able to do those items But let me say On the Akwabom College of Science and Technology I won't wait for that needs assessment I'm asking the commissioner for education To proceed to that college And make sure they get all the needs Give me a full report on what they need to get their accreditation Thank you Thank you, students Of the greatest Nigerian students So, but You have to decide, listen You have to decide Between leaving the campus As a college of science and technology Or you want a campus of the University of Akwabom State University to come there I will leave that to the elders You go and decide There are advantages, there are disadvantages So go and weigh the pros and the cons There is an opportunity For you to have a campus of the University, Akwabom State University now Because we are moving The campus at Obiokba And if you want it, we'll bring it to you But because The campus at Obiokba Is now a federal university of agriculture Courtesy of the Senate President But you must understand Whether you want that campus Or you want a college of science and tech You are the ones wearing the shoes You can decide for yourself When you do Please let the stakeholders write And I know the stakeholders of Inee and Ikona I know them If I don't see their signatures there You're on your own We have empowered our young people in Ikona And Inee And one of them is your son Uankay I didn't know he's an Inee son I thought he was from Zirubium So you see We, as we seek capacity We'll continue to encourage our young people, regardless of where they come from I love everybody I am governor for Akwabom State What I want to see is capacity Show me that you are ready When you get a small job, do it And then more will be added to you Bible say, "He that is faithful in little" Shall receive more Let me address our young people And I like to speak to young people of Akwabom We have a portal The whole economy of the world today Is run based on data And we must be able to show statistics Of what any government has done In God with But for man, show us your data We have opened portals For almost everything, procurement, employment, um Bostrey, God bless that student And we are paying for those who have registered You see all this empowerment We are empowering Today In Ikoni We're empowering farmers Traders MSE We're empowering four hundred and seventy-six of you With a total sum of two hundred and thirty-nine million naira, one hundred and fifty thousand All their names and phone numbers are here You can call them, you can find out These people went on the portal Don't let anybody deceive you Don't listen to what the people are telling you If you don't register on the portal, nothing for you If you're a student And you cannot use computer That has finished university And does not know how to apply for job using the portal You are deceiving yourself or I don't know the university you went Maybe you went to University of Petro But if you went to a good university You should be able to know how to use computer And when we do the exams We are going to use the computer And as you finish writing, the computer will give you the result Nobody, listen to me, I became a governor By the grace of God By the instrumentality of the Gnudom Gabriel Emmanuel And I did not know anybody If we're looking for people to be governor in this state I would not have chosen myself But it is the grace of God that brought me Now, having been brought by the grace of God What does that mean? I must allow that grace to reach other people who know nobody You must be able to apply without knowing the governor Without knowing the deputy governor Without knowing the secretary of government, and then you get a job That is my mission So anybody deceiving you that don't use the portal A governor will come and give you slots Slots, I bow Slots, I bow Come to me, I need a hardo I don't promise you for us, you know, man, I don't mean go for Governor, follow Car portal Slay info Young fuck, get back, I come Don't go through there I'm a good I forboran be me I don't go to About contract Yeah, me worry, me never worry Again, don't me, I suck, me never worry, me never worry I go again, I'm going, I'm worried I'm in bed, I'm in frame I was saying, I'm a woman, you know, I'm a engineer I don't me me So I'm down, I'm getting sad, I'm in draw So I mean, I'm a woman, I'm a woman Car portal, I don't, I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman I can tell you, we verify, we check, and then we do that I met a young engineer Who is working the agri leasing, um, um, project Equipment leasing project I asked her, "How did you get this job?" She says she applied on the portal And they gave her Those are the testimonies I want to get So our young people Go to the portal Groups, groups, support groups Go to the portal We are going to publish the list of all the registered groups And the number of people that have benefited from our grants But I will not come and say, female youth, purple, take twenty Female youth, lemon, take fifty, I won't do that What I'm saying is that, go to the portal When you qualify, they will give you, as we pay you, it will reflect in your group So when your leader comes and says, eh, they've used us, they've dumped us We are going to publish the list soon So you will see what female youth, purple How many people have benefited from government programs And if you want to further interrogate it You will interrogate it, you'll see the names You'll see the account number And you want to interrogate further, you'll see the bank So you know Let us for once, run a government for the people By the people of the people, which is democracy Let us do it So that people who are nobody can become somebody Don't let anybody deceive you Special project, specialties, special, who is not special? All of us in Akwabom, we are special Are you not special? Let me be a preacher for once, touch yourself Say, "I am special" And don't let anybody deceive you In here, I'm here, I'm here, I know Me power, you're saying, I'm a power, we thank you, we so we bumpa It's like we are government, I win now, I win now You take it, you take it Don't worry, don't worry Usenke, usenke That don't be publisher, get groove on me Yeah, publisher, get ball And I can't, I can't, I can't So please, go to the portal On the dualization of roads Ikoni When you vote for me, when the time comes If by the grace of God I come back That will be my first project for you But this first term, road has closed So, in notes, in them I give you a note Madok I buy, I'm a, I'm a dualize Better, I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman So I'm I mean, I'm the only one, I just want to So you had a lot of, I'm not, I'm a, I'm a dualize Eh, I give you a note, I give you a note, I'm a woman Now we have returned to one party, APC Please let us be one All meetings, there's no more, this one calls meeting, this one call meeting Let the party be one And I beg you, don't divide the party APC Akwabom World So when we are doing meeting, we are all in one party Don't separate the party Let us be together When you do a meeting, recognize the leader The member of the House of Representatives Recognize the commissioner, recognize house member, we are all one I'm a student, I'm a And you need get it, I I've a, I've a, I've a, I'm a I'm a, I'm a Jesus, I'm a I put it on the toe, who saw We are all walking towards one agenda President Bola Ahmed Distinguished Senator Goswil Pastor Omor And all, all the APC candidates, when the time comes So, I can't vote for Jana, and when I get me, who are you fighting for? Many and Tom go down, I'm a woman, I'm a woman I'm in the O O one Under the new dispensation I'm a Akwabom State And then we do O O one
I'm a And I'm a
So, I'm a woman, I'm a woman The fact that I'm a woman, does not mean I can buy, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a Senator Goswila, I'm a I'm a, I'm a, I'm a I'm a woman, I'm a leader Then I'm, I'm getting, I'm feeling And yet, I think you know, I get national O O three, get national, you don't draw
Draw
Get state, O O one, and here we do
I'm a
So, I'm a woman, I'm a woman, I'm a woman Benpo, O O one, now I You be chairman, not be from out, oh